Counselor, Creed, you need a half a second to get things organized. Do you have a problem?
Yeah.
Too close to that one.
That one. You got that one too close.
I don't know why, but I turned it off.
That's weird.
It's all right, Corey, how's yours?
We'll just shun Plowman, Richard, tonight.
Is that a mic right there?
Yeah.
Usually it's up that way, back a little further.
Yeah.
All right, welcome to all of you. It's good to see you. Today we have all media, sorry my count please, for Channel 32. And our parents could not make it. After that, you will have a little bit of a reprieve until January 7th, so don't miss the next meeting. Okay?
January 7?
January 7th. There will be a committee of the whole.
Be a nice break.
And we'd like to recognize Kevin Phillips in the gallery, our consultant, who will help us later on with our open house. Counselor Bengri, if you'd like to do the honors.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads before thee, as a council to the town of Carston, we are indeed thankful for the positions that we hold and the service we give to our community. We ask that thy guiding spirit be with us this evening as we discuss the affairs and the matters concerning our town and our citizens. May we be guided and may we listen to the guiding factors. We say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you very much. All right, we have under item 3, additions and adoption of agenda. We have two additions to the agenda and they will be noted under 7M, which would be a Carston High School Civil Profiture Grant. Welcome, Counselor Balthus. And we will have under 7N, another item that has to do with an education session on negotiating effectively. So we'll talk about it a little bit later, and the town is hosting that session. All right, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor P. Voight, adopting the agenda as amended. Any questions?
Do we have a copy of that or do...? I don't see that 7M in front of me. Where am I screaming?
This is why they call additions.
Oh, okay.
I will talk about that later on.
We don't have a copy of it yet.
Not at this point.
Okay, all right.
All right, no questions. Sign now, I will call. Question, all in favor? Motion carried, thank you. We will have a delegation that will take place at 6:00 PM. And at that time, we will have a public hearing for the bylaw 1606C in regard to changes to the electric distribution rates. Kevin Phillips, our consultant, will make a presentation to council prior to the hearing. So we move to item 5, adoptions of minutes of the regular council meeting of November 26, 2013. Administration has made a correction under Mayor's and Reeve report. The name of Mayor Barney should have stated Mayor George Barney rather than Mayor Craig Barney. That correction was made. So I need a motion to adopt the amended. Counselor P. Voight is moving to adopt the minutes. Any questions or changes required? No? Sign now. All in favor? Motion carried, thank you. Business arising, we have no item to discuss today. So to help us to move directly into item 7, that is quite lengthy. Item 7I, which is the bylaw 1606C, electric distribution bylaw, will be dealt with after the hearing. So, gentlemen, if you don't mind, let's try to move that agenda fairly quickly because at 6 o'clock, we will have that hearing and at 6:30, the staff has prepared supper for us and in between, we have to take our collective picture and look pretty. Let's move on with the agenda.
Easier for some than others.
Right. 7A, council committee of the whole, the MSI issue. If you remember right, we talked about a possibility of writing a letter, but administration was not given any direction. So you will find on your table, on the front of you, a draft that I wrote regarding a possibility of issues that we could deal with regarding that MSI funding. So maybe if you want to take a minute and kind of look at it.
Mayor Cronin, will you just distribute a copy of those additions so council has...?
Thank you.
Counselor, there you go. Thank you. Can we have a copy too?
Yes. Okay. Are there some definite changes that you want to see done regarding the ideas? Administration will draft the letter, the appropriate letter. Those are just points to be addressed. Counselor Bengri?
Mayor Cronin, could you explain what you feel in item number 5?
All right. What there is here, we believe that the possible solution will be to influx more flexibility into the regional partnership grant. Right now, if we have an item that needs to be looked after, that really pertinent to our towns, there is no way to obtain money, operation funding, to solve our problem. Therefore, the only time we can obtain money is if the county, for example, and ourselves, have a similar concern and that's the only time you can get money. In the past, when you receive MSI operating funding, you could deal with your situation, your problem, without worrying about if the county was happy with it or not.
Then do we want...
So it restricts us.
Then do we want to enter into a partnership program grant? Or do we want just the MSI funding back for our area?
Well, what we need is... that's a broader question. What we need is all the MSI back, all flexibility into that regional partnership with additional grant that would address our specifics in municipalities. That's... the other question has been kind of taken at the AUMA and I do not know that there is really a desire from the present government to change the model. So if we cannot change it, then let's try to figure out the way to create more flexibility. That's what I'm trying to say. Do you want... so Counselor P. Voight?
Well, I think maybe what would be a better wording, rather than having flexible regional partnership grants, would be to have maybe some money available outside of regional partnership grants.
Yeah, but this is why I say create, maybe create some specific grants that could be applied for individual problems.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea, I just...
The wording is, it can be tweaked.
Well, yeah, it's not the wording. I understand the wording. I guess my problem with it is that we are assuming in here that the money would be coming from the regional partnership budget and we're basically asking them to, with that budget, create a couple of individual municipality grants. And what I think, and maybe I'm wrong, I think maybe Counselor Bengri was implying that we're not happy with them throwing all their money in that regional bucket and we want them to have maybe other buckets.
Yeah, but essentially, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. It's maybe not worded where you want it, but that's the idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I think...
It's okay, I appreciate it.
I think the intent to write the letter was to support the resolution that was passed at AUMA, which basically was just to keep giving us our MSI operating funding, you know. And that's kind of what you've said here, so maybe that one muddies the water a little bit on that.
Okay, well, administration can kind of clarify it.
The only thing with it is, Marion, is with that number 5, I don't want to see our hands tied when we have to get okayed from another partner in that program. You know, if the county doesn't deem it necessary that we have something.
And that's where the problem is.
That's where the problem is.
What's an example of something that we would need that they wouldn't...?
Marion could give you an example.
Sorry, if I can just speak to that. So under the MSI operating grant, we were open to use those funds to support either government, non-government organizations within the community or we used that funding for assistance with our library requisition, with our chief mountain solid waste requisitions, those kind of things. We also could look at it from a local priority, so there might be something within the town of Carston that, let's use, for example, the historical society wanted to do something specific. We could use that MSI funding for that type of thing. With the regional collaboration grant, we have to show the need that this is a regional project. So it may not meet local priorities and I think that's where the difference between the two grants is. And shifting the funding from the MSI operating to the regional collaboration doesn't always meet local priorities. We support regional cooperation, no question, but sometimes there is local priorities that it would be nice to be able to fund through grants.
That's my concern.
Yeah, so that's in essence what we're trying to say. Give us some flexibility to find that funding when we have local issues, which has disappeared at this point, is totally gone. Okay, so would you...
If I may, just to address a question to Marion. Do we have more needs that are individual to our municipality than regional, would you say?
It will vary from year to year in the operational side of things. I guess it's understanding how the regional collaboration program works and one of the things that we find concerning, like it is from administrative side, is that it's not able to fund ongoing projects. It's kind of a one-time thing, so we're coming up with ideas to use the funding, but it may not support things that are already in place. And that's one of the discussions we've had from the CEOs at the provincial level as well, is that there's already good examples out there of regional collaboration, but the program doesn't help to fund those because they're not new projects. So it'll vary amongst municipalities what that need really is and what our needs are today may not be what our needs are two or three years from now.
Okay, so essentially, are we in favor to have a letter drafted with some of those points and to clarify the points that you both made?
Yeah.
Would it be fine?
Any motion on that or just direction?
No, you want a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we make the motion, so Counselor Balthus made the motion that we address the ministry of municipality regarding the MSI funding formula. All in favor? Thank you, Carrot. All right, let's move on to 7B, Phillips Partners Consulting Services Agreement. You have some background in your pocket regarding this item and Marion felt that a formal agreement was needed to procure the services of Kevin Phillips. Kevin has been with the town as a consultant for many, many years and has really helped us greatly at a time where changes in policies and everything and complexities happen, of which really don't ask me too many questions. It's so complex, Marion helped us once and honestly, it was amazing how much she knows. So I need a motion to approve the Phillips Partners Consulting Service Agreement. Counselor Balthus moved that. Any questions regarding that agreement? Counselor Bengri?
How does Mr. Phillips feel about this contract?
I think he's quite happy that we have a contract.
Finally?
Yeah, well...
2006 was...
I guess we've been relatively indifferent, is how you could put it, but I appreciate it, sure.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions?
I just, I had a question. I'm really happy that we have a fellow with Kevin's expertise. I'm just wondering, how often do we need his services? And what constitutes a need?
Okay, that's a very good point and I will allow Marion to give us some clarification because that's a very good question.
Sure, I'll be glad to speak to that. Thanks, Counselor. We use Kevin on an as-need basis, so he would help with things such as rate setting. He monitors the market for us, monitors the industry for us and would bring to our attention any items that would be, have an effect on us moving forward with our distribution system. A lot of the work that Kevin does on our behalf actually is for the AMPs communities. So there's Fort McLeod, Crowe'sness, Past Pinoka and the town of Carston that have joined an informal group and many of our needs are very common and many of the issues facing us are very common. And so a lot of times, when Kevin's doing work on our behalf, that cost will be shared amongst the municipalities because the outcome is a benefit to all of us. One example that we use in force contract negotiations with NMAX Energy and NMAX Power and you have actually one of those contracts before you tonight. So it's not an ongoing relationship, so it's not a contractual relationship in that every year, we're going to pay you X amount of dollars to do these services for us. It's on an as-need basis. But do we need him frequently? Some years, we need him more frequently than others. Contract negotiation years, we will use more of his time. Rate setting on an annual basis, we ask him to keep us up to speed on those and recommendations to council. We have a quarterly meeting, I guess it would be. We try to have a quarterly meeting. Sometimes it's a semi-annual meeting, just to discuss issues, things within the industry that we need to be aware of and that's with ourselves as well as the other three municipalities. So our costs will vary year to year. We do budget for that contract annually at a set amount, but those costs vary.
What's an average yearly cost?
Three.
We budget $20,000 max and I think in... we very, very seldom have gone over that. I can't remember even one time that we've actually gone over that amount. I would say we're probably in the $10,000 to $15,000 a year on average.
Marion, when we're talking about the compensation shared amongst the three AMPs communities, how often does that happen, Kevin? In your services, when you're reviewing everything, is it a real good look at that we're sharing services with the other communities all the time?
Yeah, I'd say it's probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the activities are shared in some respect.
Yeah, even when he's looking at rates on our behalf, you know, he's looking at industry rates and what's happening in the markets with orders applications and those kind of things. And so that translates into information for the other three municipalities as well. So a lot of it is shared.
Thank you. Any more questions?
If I can just add one, I think.
Sure.
One of the very valuable things that Kevin brings to the relationship is his expertise in the industry because it is a very complex environment that we function under as a distribution system and we do not have the expertise in-house. We can't afford to have the expertise in-house. And so Kevin provides that for us on a very cost-effective basis, so...
Thank you.
All right, so then one more question. I need a motion to approve the Phillips Partners...
Motion, or your own motion, please.
Oh, you made the motion, sorry, Counselor Balthus. You beat me to this one. Okay, all in favor? Motion carried, thank you. All right.
I can smile a little broader.
All right.
The thing to remember is we've always paid him anyways.
So I keep coming back.
I'm just going to change order right now between 7C and 7D. Since we're talking about energy, let's go with 7D. Is the NMAX Energy Corporation amending agreement?
7C?
7D. Just...
B or D? I have old man's ears, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So Kevin Phillips, as you just heard, has worked with NMAX and the agreement that we have with NMAX needed to be amended and to make it more relevant to the need of the customer who choose the electrical regulated rate option. When you see the acronym RRO, that's what it refers to, is a regulated rate option. So do you have any questions for Kevin? Because on this one, we'll let the pro answer. Would you like to...
Would you like Kevin to kind of present what the agreement is?
The changes are?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Well, and I think for council, it would be beneficial to hear what this contract actually is for.
Okay, thank you.
So you understand that's... I'll let Kevin do that.
Sure, is that on that? Okay, good. Essentially, you as a distributor offer three separate tariffs and one of them is a distribution tariff that we're going to talk about the rates for later on. The other one is the RRO and default tariff. Those are the two that this contract pertains to. And you're contracting with NMAX Energy to provide the billing of individual customers for you and to procure the energy that's required to provide this tariff. So they're in the market buying energy on a month-to-month basis for this contract and it's been in place and I think this is the second or third time we've renewed the contract since 2001. And so this extension is, we can just do it through an amending agreement because nothing in the original agreement is changing. This is an administrative matter that is extending the term by two years and four months to try and get us into an area a couple of years from now where we think that the RRO structure is going to change and that is coming from Alberta Utilities Commission investigation that's going on right now into how it works. And the Department of Energy is looking at actually getting rid of the RRO and keeping the default part of the tariffs in place because it's, they're questioning whether it's meeting the original objective, which was to protect customers from having to be thrown into a competitive market. And so instead, you have this RRO that's a regulated rate. It's, it changes months upon... it's changed over time. It started out as a nice flat rate that was regulated and definitely was lower than anything in the market. Today, it's higher than a number of the offerings that are in the market for contracts and it's now being viewed as a barrier to an open competitive market and that's why the Department of Energy really wants to get rid of it. But people like the idea that it's regulated, they think it's a government rate and it's safer, but really, it's more volatile than a contract. So this agreement gets you two more years down the road at the same rates, basically, that your citizens have been paying. It doesn't cost the town anything for the service. NMAX offers it and takes the revenues from it and you're outside of the risks and efforts associated with offering.
Counselor Bengri?
Mr. Phillips, what concerns me about this is, under the administration charge, we've basically left it over to NMAX to decide that they're making money and their profit margin is enough or default or anything like that. How do we control that? Because could they come back to us and say, hey, just a minute, you know, our profit margin isn't there, so we got to charge more?
Well...
Do you monitor that?
There is a provision in the agreement that they could come back and ask, should their risk shift significantly and they decided they needed to have a larger margin. That provision's been in the agreement since day one and it's never been acted upon, even though the risks have been kind of jumping around inside that tariff. When I sit down before any interaction goes on with the AMPs members, I sat down with NMAX and we said, you know, okay, so where are we going with this amendment or the next agreement, you know? What do you guys want out of it? What do we want out of it? And they're quick to reassure these members that they want the exposure out of this contract and that's partly why the administrative charge hasn't changed over time and they want their name on the bill to your customers so that no matter what happens with the RRO in the future, they at least have that relationship built with your end-use customers. So it's very important to them to try to stay with status quo. Now, I can't, it is a negotiated price, so I really can't even go into the regulated or Calgary's regulated numbers. I shouldn't say I can't, I have and it's reasonable. That's the assurance I can give you is that their administrative charges are reasonable. Does it calculate out exactly the same margin in Calgary versus here? It's very difficult to say because the procurement and the shave is slightly different and you spend more money trying to figure that out than you would ever find as a difference. So I've always been confident that, yes, they're making a reasonable margin, but they're certainly not trying to take advantage of the relationship with the town. And that's about all the assurance I can give you on that.
Any other questions? Okay, so I need a motion to accept...
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Counselor Edmonds has made... Thank you. Has made a motion to accept the amended NMAX Energy Corporation agreement. Any further question? No, so all in favor? Counselor Bengri? All right, so let's go back to 7C, the Benchmark Assessment Consultants Professional Services Agreement. The Benchmark Assessment Consultants Professional Services Agreement. Now, the agreement we have is expiring at the end of 2013. And I must really congratulate our administration for having had an excellent working relationship with Morgan Strade.
Straddy.
Strade, who is our town assessor. And we like to retain his services. Marion has done an excellent work renegotiating the future rates to the town's budget benefit. The rates was to be $27 per parcel plus GST, and which would have been a significant increase from where they're at at this point, $20 to $50. So you can see in your document, the rates on page four of the documents that you have been given. So those rates, as you can see, from January 1st to December 31st, 2014, are $20 to $50 per parcel plus GST, with a small increase of 50 cents the following year, a dollar and a dollar again for 2017 and 2018. But that represents a huge amount of saving for our budgets. So I need a motion to approve the Benchmark Assessment Consulting Professional Services Agreement.
Question.
Yeah, let's have a motion first, we'll take the question afterwards. Councilor Barnes? Okay. Questions? Councilor Van Groot, go ahead.
When we look at our budgets, 2014, 15, and 16, it's projected that we're reducing every year. And is Morgan online with that?
Yeah. If I can just explain that with the budget process. In the original contract that he sent, he was proposing a dollar per year increase.
Right.
So the budget that you were presented included that dollar per year. If you look at the current contract, we're proposing that in 2014, it only increased by 50 cents from 22 to 22.50. 2015, another 50 cents, and then in 2016, a dollar. So that's where our savings have come in. Because originally, the 22.50 would have been 23, the 23 would have been 24, and the 24 would have been 25.
Okay, so that's three savings reflected on the budget?
Yes.
Yes, they're already there.
Good.
Okay. So any more questions?
Very reasonable.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, let's go to seven E. Brownlee Emerging Trends Seminar. There will be a seminar in Calgary on February the 12th, starting eight o'clock in the morning, which means that we would have to leave the night before.
It says 13.
Oh, 13, yeah, we have to leave on a 12, that's what I meant, sorry. And Capu to Calgary.
Maybe just for explanation, Brownlee is one of the two leading law firms in Alberta that specializes in municipal government affairs, just so you...
Yeah. I have gone to those seminars every year and found them absolutely excellent. You come out of there with tons of knowledge and increased understanding of issues that can hit a municipality. Just from that point of view, I find it's worthwhile going. There is money in a budget set aside for each of you for education purposes that will fall into that category. So by show of hands, how many of you could go there? Okay, one, two, three. All of us?
All.
All of us? Yeah. Thank you.
It ends at 3:30 PM, right?
Yeah, we normally, we come back the same day.
I just, like, they probably have to get back to Lethbury at 7:00 on a Thursday for class.
You have to be in Lethbury by 7:00, don't you?
I have to be in Lethbury, well, by 6:30 to set up your rooms.
That gives you, should be a period of close. You might want to leave a tree.
Yeah, should be able to make...
All right. Seven F. We're moving on quite well, thank you. Christmas Hours of Operation. The proposed hours of operation have been listed in your packet. What the administration proposed is that on December 24th, the office would be closed at 12 o'clock and be reopened on December 27th. And that on December 31st, the office be open normal hours but with a skeleton staff to allow for payment of taxes. We approved such schedule of office opening in the past. We need to know if this council is willing to approve the same.
Mayor, I'd make a suggestion that we need to close the office all day on the 24th. I don't think there's a necessary need to have that office open on the 24th. And that allows our staff, our administration staff, and those in the office to have an all-day shopping experience.
Because some of us wait to the 24th before we start, right?
By the time you get out of this office, it's going to be 1:32 o'clock in the afternoon. Don't tell me any differently because I've done it. And so I'm suggesting that we close the office on the 24th.
Marion, just from an administrative point of view, does December 24th?
I think the staff would be thrilled with that.
All right. So, Councilmember, would you make the motion? Would you please read your motion and...
I'll make the motion that the Christmas hours of operation, we close on the 24th or the 23rd, on the regular closing time on the 23rd until the 25th or the...
Until the 27th.
27th, right.
We have to come to work on Christmas.
No way.
Yeah, you do. We get Christmas Eve, whatever you want.
And then...
Carry on with the December 31st.
The December 31st will leave as it is.
Yeah, it is to be fair. Okay. But with a skeleton staff, are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So...
If the administration is good with that. Because that could be a busy day.
We work it out, yeah.
All right. So the motion is on the table. Any questions? All right, all in favor? Okay, Merry Christmas.
No Scrooges here.
So it would be open Monday to Friday, basically, that we, the Christmas week, it would be open Monday.
Okay.
I won't be open by office either.
Seven G. December 16th, staff breakfast. We had one request by a counselor, Councilmember by name, to ask administration not to deal with a breakfast, but let council deal with a breakfast.
Deal.
I'm making the suggestion, Marion, that you are the staff. You and Jeff and Graham and those people that are working in that kitchen need to be out there with your staff. So let, get the stuff into the kitchen and let the council put that breakfast on for you.
That would be fantastic.
I'm good at bacon and sausages.
It's okay.
You can put pancakes.
All right. So we will deal with the breakfast. Thank you very much, council. How many of you will be able to be there?
What is the time?
It's December 16th. Can you give us the time?
The breakfast would be at 8:30, so we would need to be there about 7:30 to start.
Yeah, 7:30.
7:30, it's a Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's this Monday, by the way.
It's next Monday.
Okay, gentlemen, bring your aprons.
So we don't need to bring eggs or anything, right?
No, the food will be supplied.
We don't want you carrying the eggs, man.
All right. So Marion, do you want to deal with seven H at this point?
Sure.
Is the budget changes? Thank you. If you don't mind going to your budgets.
Got them?
Councilmember?
He's just putting the appointment in his calendar.
It's good. Are you on the budget?
No, he's trying to talk to his wife right now.
I'm with you, he's got gum.
All right. We just want to make sure we...
Oh, Mary, look at that small print.
Zoom it up, you can zoom out.
Right, I'm going to zoom in at this half-speed.
Okay.
Go for it.
All right. So as a follow-up to our meeting last Tuesday, we've done some work on the budget. I'm just going to go through the changes for 2014, 15, or 16. And as you can see from those budget documents, we are at a balanced budget figure, which means we have revenue to spend.
This is why we're giving you an extra little bit.
Extra breakfast?
Yes.
Second breakfast.
Okay, so I'll start with the taxes, real property. By direction of council, at the last meeting, you wanted us to try to reduce those taxes as best we could. So with all the changes that we've, that I'll talk about in the budget here, we've actually been able to reduce the revenue source through taxes in 2014 by $42,539, which equates to an increase in tax revenue of $15,323 over what we received in 2013. We anticipate that we will collect somewhere in the range of $20,000 just on new assessments, so new construction, which means there would be no impact. If that were the case, there would be no impact to the current residents and it would be effective. Also with those changes, we were able to reduce the 2015 taxes by $2,122 and the 2016 projections by $2,508.
Marion, does this put an extra load on our business sector by the tax?
We're not talking about...
No, we're not talking about rate yet.
At this point, we're just talking strictly about tax revenue.
About tax revenue.
When we come to April or May, when we're setting the mill rate, we will have discussion at that time about the balance between residential and commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next change that we made was account number 192402 under Light Custom Work. In there, we, does everyone got that in front of them? We added an additional $3,000 for the estimated revenue that we would receive from the sale of the 1980s, 70s bucket truck. We've actually been told that we would get $6,000 instead of $3,000. So an additional $3,000.
Do you think they know what to do?
The next is, so that's all the changes that we had in the revenue. On the expense side, the first account we changed was 212202, which is the assessor. And that's based on the contract that you just approved previously. We were able to reduce through that negotiation our 2014 expenses by $914, 2015 by $2122, and 2016 by $2,507. So again, we have a great working relationship with Morgan, and I appreciate that he was willing to negotiate that with us. And the mayor has written a little card for us to send Morgan on, you know, just thanking him for that as well, so. The next account change is 221201. Now, we've increased, that's by law enforcement expenses. We've increased that by $3,000 for the speed century. If you remember from our discussions, we had $10,000 in the capital. If we only buy the one for $3,000, it's no longer capitalized. So we had to increase the operational budget by $3,000. We reduced the capital budget by $10,000. Okay?
So does that mean we get two then?
No. We just moved, we moved it down to one, but we had to move it from capital to operational.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a certain limit to what can be capitalized.
Right.
The next account we changed was 232502, that's our public corps machinery repairs. We reduced that by $20,000, and that was based on capital projects. There's, there's, every year at year-end, we go through the machinery repair and it's allocated to the different, either departments or to capital projects. And so we thought that there was potential there. That account, a lot of times, will end up in a credit balance. So we felt that there was room there to move that by about $20,000. You may see that account showing as over throughout the year, but with year-end entries, it should balance itself out. 241100 is water wages. Now, we have a couple of changes in wages as Noel did a thorough inspection of the capital projects and the amount of wages that would be allocated towards those capitals, so we don't double-budget there. So that was just a minor change in those wages due to the capital project changes. And same with the account number 242100, which is the sanitary sewer wage account. And then...
The library.
Yeah, I just got to get to that page here. 274052 is the library requisition. And thanks to Councilor Barnes and his concerted efforts, we have, the board has reduced their requisition by $5,000. So kudos to Councilor Barnes for making that contact and kudos to the board as well for taking that initiative to try and assist us with...
Well, they've always tried to be very frugal and I just don't go digging any about it.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, way.
Okay, and then, so that's all the changes in the operational budget. On the capital budget, we had, under infrastructure provincial, we increased that by $25,000, and that is the $25,000 on the NSI funding that was for the...
Streets?
Sure.
Yeah, no, it was for the sewer.
Sewer, yeah.
Sorry, all of a sudden I drew a blank what we said we wanted the $25,000 for. It was coming from tax funding in the previous budget, so we moved it to $25,000 out of the NSI capital. That will only leave us about $25,000 in that NSI capital, so our projects have to be total above $30,000 to qualify for that because it's a percentage of what we capital grant is. And so we may have to just carry that forward to 2015 for funding. Account number 195592, we increased the amount of capitalization policy for funding of the Fourth Avenue Sewer Line. And that, I talked to at the last meeting, that we were just trying to get projections as to whether we needed to replace the sewer line, the same time we're replacing the water prior to paving. It's been determined that we will replace that, and so we are proposing that that funding come through the capitalization policy, so it doesn't have any net impact on taxes. 241762, this is, again, as Noel was going through the capital projects, looking upon two pome. There was a cost estimate for Fourth Avenue West Water Line that was reduced due to the combined work on the water and sewer line in the same area. So there was some machinery costs and some manpower hours there that they felt were, could be minimized. The next was the 242762 sanitary sewer capital. So we added the Fourth Avenue Sewer Line, a total of $99,415, but as I said, that was funded through the capitalization policy.
Marion, question. When we're doing the Fourth Avenue Sewer and Water Line, have we looked at the curbs and the curbs to see the structural ability of the curbs? Are they up to snuff? Do we need to worry about doing curbs before we lay new pavement down?
Do we have Fourth Avenue curbs issue? I'll never know. That is not a monolithic sidewalk. Yeah.
It's one of those sidewalks.
Yeah.
So it's just a curb?
Yeah, sorry, I can't answer that because I don't have the detail of the sidewalk replacement in front of me. But definitely, we would, we would look at that before we pave that street.
Good, thank you. One other question, if I may, Marion, along those lines. Are we going to affect this new, you know, road? Are we going to be cutting through it when we bring water up to the temple and then ultimately are we going to be redoing it?
Not this block.
Not this block?
This is further west.
This is west.
This is from the corner of Fifth Street, so it'll be the west end of Town Square up to the school block.
Yeah, two seven.
The last change we made was to account number 243762, which is garbage capital, and we decreased that by $8,000 to purchase only garbage, but we didn't too. So as I said, that creates a balanced budget for 2014 and 15. for 2014 and 15 with a reduction in the projected tax revenue of $42,539. And we were hoping that tonight we would have a motion to approve the 2014 budget and the 2015 and 16 in principle.
Marion, I want to congratulate you and your staff. And Noel is not here to receive our congratulations. I know how complex municipal budgets are, and really, you have done digging, and your staff and your managers have done a great job trying to keep our taxes at a level that is bearable for town. So thank you very much, appreciate that.
If I may say, it's made it easier for us because of council policy as well to be able to accomplish this because if we weren't having the flow-through of costs on our electrical and if we weren't working towards full-cost recovery on our other utilities as well, it has an effect on the taxes. And so council policy has allowed us to be able to do our budgets, meet our needs, but also be able to keep a firm line on our taxes. So, you know, I appreciate that council has that foresight as well.
Thank you very much. We need a motion.
Just, I'll make a motion. But Marion, can I come in and sit down with you and ask you some questions on some expenditures and the categorizing and stuff like that? I just, you know, I'll make a motion to approve the budget as it is, but I want some clarification on some of these areas.
Okay. Maybe what would be useful is if I took some time... I don't know how we would do this, but perhaps we could do a day of budget training for council?
The 24th of December?
Because I'm sure you're not...
At about 10:00 p.m.?
I'm sure you're not the only one that has questions about how the budget is put together and what categories are there. Perhaps we could do something that's more general than going through the budget line item by line item with individual councils?
Well, I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about a whole bunch of programs that... I'm sitting here with my adding machine and that, you know... I just want some clarification, though.
Councilor Banbury, I would imagine that what you're talking about is a program under the FCSS grant. That what I would imagine? There's about 20 lines worth of it?
Yeah, there's those and some other programs.
That is probably what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't mind meeting with you if there's something that needs to come back to council. But I know the budget is a very complex thing. And as I said before with you, some of you just being elected to council, one of the first things we make you do is approve a $9 million budget. And that's... It can be a little bit overwhelming, right?
Yeah. You hit us with jail time first, so we're good.
I'll threaten to get the moratorium done. Good budget, in principle.
All right. So Councilor Banbury is putting a motion forward to accept the 2014 budget and to accept in principle the 2015 and 2016 budgets. That's the way it has to be said. All in favor? Okay. Councilor Barnes, you were telling me you would like to have a training session. How many of you would like a training session on budget?
Let's all do it.
Okay. I think it will be a useful thing. So maybe in the new year, if you could find a time, December 24th is out.
I have all day now, so...
You'll be by yourself.
All right. We have five more minutes before our public hearing. So let's deal with 7J, the auditor appointment. You have some background regarding this item. What I need is a motion to appoint a young park in McNab or YPM as we know them as a Town of Carstens auditor for the 2013 year-end audit. For your information, in 2011, the council of that day approved YPM as their auditor, the town auditor, for the next three years. But it is requested, since there is a budget item line attached to an audit, that we approve the auditor on a yearly basis. So I need that motion coming. Councilor Edmonds made this motion to have YPM appointed as a Town of Carstens auditor for the 2013 year-end audit. Any questions?
Just clarification. So this is this cost here, that's our annual?
The 20...
21218?
Yeah.
That's annual. It's a contract price?
Yes. That's a contract price that was negotiated. To give you a little bit of background, 2011, we had a request for... What do you call it? We had requested the different firm present possibilities, proposals, that's right, to the town. And we looked at them and really, for the amount of money that we were spending and what we were getting from them, we realized that YPM still was giving us the best return on our dollar. So this is why we kept them as a firm. Councilor Banbury?
I think in the broad perspective of everything, if YPM's been doing the audit for the last, what, 10 years? 15 years?
Probably 10.
Yeah. Then they know what's happening. They're familiar with it. They can come in here and work with our staff. And I think it saves us money.
Councilor Banbury, you're totally correct. The cost of changing a firm is very, very high for the first year when they come in because it takes them a long time to be able to really understand the structure, the way, the office works, et cetera. So there were many elements that we looked at. There were about five or six different parameters that we used in order to decide which was the best fit for our town. Anyway, so I need that motion to approve YPM. The council has made that motion. So what we need is... Any other questions? No? So let us all vote on it. All in favor? Thank you. All right, it's 6 o'clock. Two minutes? All right, let's try to finish 7K and 7L. 7K and 7L are similar items. They're both are requests for letters of support for grants being applied for. So 7K, the Rotary has agreed to write a CFAP grant to help the town secure funds for the swimming pool slide. It's a matching grant, which means that we will have to also find some funding from non-grant sources such as public donation and town expenses on a project. So I need a motion from council for us to send the letter. Thank you, Councilor Barnes. We need to send the letter on behalf of the Rotary Club as support for the town.
Just a question. Is the Rotary taking it upon themselves to get that matching funds? Or need to get those...
No. What the Rotary is taking on is the grant application to secure half of the money. And the rest of it, we have a fellow, Mr. Pillin, who is in charge of the donations and who has different ideas to how to raise some extra funds.
David?
From this...
Mayor Crone, just for explanation. Sorry, Jeff was just telling me when we put the application in, we will put the fencing and the decking as part of the application as well because we're going to expend that, so that will give us our matching funding right there. So anything we raise for fundraising, aside from that, will be beneficial. But we will have the matching funding on what we already expected.
And are we... Am I correct in assuming we're gonna reapply for a matching grant next year as well?
We are planning that very seriously.
I'm just wondering if we could roll over whatever we get in fundraising as matching funds for next year?
Yes, because the council will be able to... Councilor Banbury?
Just a comment. That's a pretty expensive water slide, $250,000.
Councilor Banbury, Jeff has done the very, very best research.
Oh, I'm sure.
It's a very, very unique kind of design, and maybe Jeff wants to talk to it.
One of the things about the water slide is when we took proposals, we asked that they price them separately because we didn't know what they cost. And when we saw what they cost, we asked for all the tenders to be excluding the water slide. They're incredibly expensive. This is not a big... 16 feet high, not a big... Two turns in it, it's a figure eight essentially, and we're talking $250,000. When you get into these types of things, little two-foot jet sprayers are six grand. I mean, everything is just incredible dollars because all the liability is rolled up into that.
The present mechanical in the pool will support pumping the water into the water slide and stuff.
Right now, all the piping is stubbed off, and all the drainage is already put in the pool. And all the mechanical is included in Acapulco's space bid right now.
All right. So we have a motion on the table from Councilor Barnes. Any more questions? All in favor? Thank you. Do we want to...
We should go to the public hearing.
Yes, okay. All right. So I need a motion to adjourn to our public hearing. Councilor Barnes gives us a motion to...
I'm going downstairs.
Adjourn to our public hearing. So are you... All in favor? Thank you. Now you may go.
Answer any questions down there, would you?
Graham, I don't know what I'm doing here, so you might want to...
Wow, I don't think I've heard that before.
They don't let me touch technology, trust me. As long as my phone turns on and my computer turns on...
Do you need a minute recess at this point?
Rest just get up and stretch.
Okay, do you want to stretch a little bit? Okay.
90 seconds. Just be careful standing up. You don't get the bulb right in the eyes.
Hey, Jeff and Doug, are we gonna get this in here?
Okay, well, you need to stretch.
Oh, yeah, he'll do a full presentation. He'll do an in-camera presentation. Do you have any concerns, anything? Yep, no worries there.
I don't want no training. We had one year... What do they call it?
Oh, yeah.
Can we come down and come down?
No, Doug will come down. I don't know. I figured if you were gonna take the time to write that up, that we need to be there.
So is that... Your course consent to...
Councilor P. Boy, you probably figured this out just gonna show Councilor Barnes.
Calm down, it's in two hours.
And if I go, for example, back to that budget, I'm learning a few things about these things. So I'm learning about how you can swipe things in. So he can swipe that off to the left and expand that, and then just bring it back in again. So it's kinda handy for you when you need to get bigger. Just swipe it off to the left, expand as needed, and then just bring it back in again. And it's pretty handy.
Marion said it's very...
So I've been messing with it. I'm starting to find that if you... So if I have a number of things pulled up and I just hit the start button, get back here, and then open up another program, you can... Well, you can swipe them in as you need.
Right, right.
So you can just keep bringing them in and rotate around right where it's gonna open. So it's kinda neat. There's some interesting things as you start figuring through it.
Yeah, no, there's definitely a very curve on Windows 8.
Does that have the possibility to make it look like it's Windows 7?
I have no idea. Well, you can... You have desktop, you can...
Like I said, every time I go to show and kind of keep playing this Windows 8, but I still find it's very busy.
Hey, I've got a program for you. It's called Windows 8 for Dummies. I read it in my waters.
Yeah, there's not necessarily attachments for every item either.
Yeah, it works.
Yeah, it's good info.
I'm going to...
It washes you through the whole thing. It really does. It's a good program.
I'm going to stick this way. Thanks, Marion.
We can make room for you here.
Can we reconvene? We're not... Reconvening is not the proper word. Let's take our place. Is Councilor Barnes...
Councilor Barnes is changing clothes for the picture. This guy just brought us...
Okay, well, maybe we will start to carry on. Marion, would you like to start to present the bylaw 1606C, known as Electricity Distribution bylaw, please?
Okay, the public hearing is to hear regarding bylaw 1606C, a bylaw of the Town of Carstens in the province of Alberta to amend by law 1606, the electricity distribution bylaw, pursuant to the Municipal Government Act as amended and pursuant to the Electric Utilities Act and as amended, and any regulations pertaining thereto, and that these acts and regulations grant municipalities certain rights and powers concerning the ownership of electrical distribution systems and their uses. Where it is necessary to provide new rates, the council of the Town of Carstens believes that Schedule A Distribution Tariff for its schedule effective February 2014 be included for part of that bylaw. And I will then turn the time over to Mr. Phillips to discuss the...
Okay. Kevin, if you want, about this.
Thank you, counsel. The thing we might do initially is go... Go through a couple of slides and lay out what the current structure is and where Carstens fits into that structure. It's not a pretty chart, but we'll just hit on the highlights and exploring the details we may want to get into. Primarily, this is to recognize this structure that changed from the typical old utility structure where entities were vertically integrated right through generation through to the end-use customer. So on the left-hand side of this chart, we see the main functions of the electric industry being generation, transmission, distribution, and the retail function. What the government did when it restructured the industry was to take that generation function and essentially deregulate that so that anybody willing to take the risk of becoming a generator could construct their own facility and feed into the market. The next two components, transmission and distribution, are the wire components of the system, transmission being the higher voltage structures. Those two elements have remained fully regulated under the Alberta Utilities Commission or municipal councils such as yourselves. And you can see the variety of players in those markets there. And looking under what I have labeled there as Fortis, they're distributors for the majority of southern Alberta. And within that, the area that they encompass, you have your own distribution service territory, yet you connect to the Fortis distribution system. And that is just a function of history as far as I can determine. It doesn't require any specific facilities, really, other than a connection point to the transformer. The town is essentially just like any other large industrial customer of Fortis, and in fact, you are part of that rate class for Fortis. And so you pay for transmission service and distribution service through the Fortis invoice that you get on a monthly basis. The last major function is the retail function. And this is a function that was partially deregulated in that, in the lower box there that's just filled with white. Those are the competitive offers. So a, an entity can purchase energy from the market and resell it to individual end-users through contractual offerings. And there's, there are a lot of rules around it, but it's basically a, a function that you can assume at your own risk. And, um, add to the competitive nature of those offers. Now, the, the part of the retail function that remains regulated gets back to the offering that we were, or the tariff that we were talking about earlier, which is the regulated rate tariff and the default tariff. These were tariffs that were given to distributors as a, as an obligation. And they continue in place for consumers who have not selected or chosen to go onto a longer-term competitive offer. So that's, that's the bulky pieces of this. Going horizontally across, you can see the different players in each grouping. Generation now, there's, I don't know how many exactly, there are generators in the province, but they're numerous. And it's a very healthy market. It's attracting investment in various different fuel types. So that generation market, um, is really, the, the whole structure now, uh, as it's laid out is encouragement to bring on as much generation in the province as possible. To enable as much... ...level. Those are the two primary focuses on the industry. And the transmission and distribution wires in the middle are simply the soldiers doing the work to get the energy from one end to the other. And that's why they remain regulated so that it is very tightly controlled and it can be managed in a reliable and safe manner. Without, um, no need for competition in those areas. So if you can see the red line up there, it's not that clear on this chart, but the, um, the red line is, is simply showing, uh, one of the functions that the Alberta Electric System Operator performs. Off on the right-hand side there. And one of those functions is to manage the power pool in the province. And when I mentioned market earlier, this is the market for energy. And in fact, all energy that's produced by the generators has to be sold into that market. And conversely, to get it to the other end of the, the market, you, you have to be a retailer or a large industrial customer to take power out of that market. So the pool performs the function of setting the hourly price for that energy. For anybody who hasn't already made a deal around the market to purchase energy directly from a generator at a set contract level. But the concept there is the power pool is, is managed closely so that only enough generation is brought onto the system to supply the demand that's forecast for the upcoming periods. And in doing that, as you work up and you invite higher and higher-priced generators to produce, that's how the hourly price is set. And, uh, and that is the price that the energy is sold at as well, if you haven't made it an alternative range. So that power pool is a key feature of the, the current structure in the market and is managed by the ISO. The other functions of the electric system operator or ISO is to oversee the, the transmission system. Now, it doesn't own any of those assets. All of those parties in the transmission row are the ones who actually own and operate the assets. And effectively lease or bill the ISO for providing transmission service. And with those charges, the ISO tallies them up along with a number of other services they provide. And produce a tariff for transmission service that is paid for by the distributors listed in the, in the row there. The Forests, the Adco's, and the Upcores of the world, and the Lethbridge and Reddears. And these are distributors who actually connect to the transmission system rather than the distribution system. So they are paying a common transmission tariff across the province. It doesn't matter where you are. It's the same, same tariff. On the distribution side, all those same players are there. The only ones I haven't identified up here for distribution are the other AMPs, community members, Fort McLeod and Crow's Nest and Pinocchio. They also, with the exception of Fort McLeod, connect through the Forests system. Fort McLeod connects to the transmission system. Now, the tariff that we're looking at tonight in terms of rates is that distribution tariff. And each distributor has a distribution tariff and it is structured fairly rigidly. Get into more detail on that, but it's, it's set up to be understandable by all of the retailers who actually pay the distribution tariff. And so that if you're a retailer and you have customers in different jurisdictions across the province. Each distribution tariff is structured in a, in a manner that's consistent with the legislation and regulations. And that's how your tariff has been structured as well, so that it's understandable and the cost elements are clear. So that's, that's, distribution tariff is this third tariff that, that you offer and that's, that's where it comes about in this chart. Um, I didn't mention imports or exports, but imports are also bringing energy into the system and exports are taking energy out of the system. And, uh, and operate just like, uh, generators and retailers. So that is the overview on the, the industry structure today. And it's not getting any simpler. Maybe one thing I could talk about is settlement that the electric system operator does. In each hour, not only is the price set, uh, but the amount of energy that is consumed by every end-use customer meter in the province has to be determinable. And, and that process is what's called settlement. And the province tries to balance the energy that's coming into the system with the energy that's going out of the system, taking into account all of the losses that occur. And all of the odd things that are going on that create, um, unaccountable amounts of energy. But it, they have to follow it right from the generator, right down to the end-use customer, so that retailers know exactly how much to bill their customers. The, the metering throughout the province keeps track of all that. Distributors need to, um, need to understand exactly what their customer types are. Take those customers that are metered by hour out of the equation and then add a shape to those who aren't metered by the hour, such as your residential customers. And that shape on a, on a daily basis determines, um, when you have a customer that just has a cumulative meter, you've got a hundred units accumulated or consumed over that month. You need to know how much was consumed every day and every hour of every day so that that hourly pool price can be applied to it. And the retailer knows exactly what it costs them to purchase the energy out of the pool for that customer and they can bill it. So that's what settlement does and I, I focus on that because it's a key component of your distribution tariff. And it's also one that you are able to contract out. And under a, a separate contract, like the one that you have with NMAX Energy to do the RRO, you have a contract with NMAX Power Corporation who does your settlement function for you. And really, being able to contract out, contract that out is what helps you be able to operate in this environment, this complex environment. Without taking on the staff in the system that's required to, to manage the complexity. So that's why I bring up load settlement. It's such a key component. Let's go on to a bit of a discussion about what it means to be a distribution facility owner. These rights come to the municipality through the municipal government act. And, and the right is to own and operate a system within your own municipality. The other, next obligation there is to provide the three tariffs that I mentioned. And the next obligation is that council has the right and ability to approve and set their own electric rates for the distribution tariff. And, uh, and the only catch, if you will, or condition on that is that once you have approved the tariff and it comes with a certain price level and a certain structure, you have to implement it on that basis. Which, um, I, I've yet to see that ever happen anywhere, ever. But that's something obviously that we're making sure happens, that, so that nobody gets a bill and they look at it and they compare your tariff to what they're paying and say, this, this doesn't even make sense. I don't even see my rate on here. On that condition, they would have cause to request the Utilities Commission to check a little bit. The next bullet there is your obligation to comply with industry standards. With this complex industry, there's a plethora of regulations and codes to be followed. And, um, many of those are implemented through, or followed and complied with through your contracts with, uh, NMAX Power Corporation. But others, uh, you take care of on your own through your safety standards and, and compliance with, uh, billing and, and a number of other things in terms of operating your distribution system. So that's an obligation you carry. The next point there, only to maintain it safely and reliably, that, that's clearly going on a daily basis and certainly have capable staff doing that at the moment here. The arrangement here, I've talked about what you acquired from NMAX Power Corporation and NMAX Energy. And that contract extension agreement is the one we discussed earlier tonight. Now, just to get down into a little bit more detail on the distribution tariff. It has, uh, it has cost components to it. I mentioned that being a customer of Forests, uh, Forests pays for transmission service from the electric system operator. And charges you a small distribution tariff to deliver power to your connection point. You're also paying on an annual basis charges to NMAX Power for their load settlement services. And, and billing of retail, retailers of your distribution tariff. And then on top of that, you have your own costs of operating and maintaining and investing in your, your distribution system. So I throw the term tariff around probably more comfortably than I should, but really, because people often think about that as a charge or a rate or like, what, what's the difference? The tariff is actually the document and, and the overall name of the document. There are subdocuments within that and, and one is the rate schedule for every rate class that you have. And that's what we are seeking approval on tonight, changes to that schedule. The second one is the terms and conditions of service. And that's a bulky document that describes in pretty detailed relationship between you as a distributor and the end-use customer. And the retailers that, that operate in your area as well. And we're not, that, that rarely changes. It's a pretty consistent document. And then there's a fee schedule also for minor services like connects and disconnects that you perform on a, a one-off basis as they come up. And, um, those fees are remaining in place for the time being. We're just looking at rate schedules tonight. This is the, um, chart that gives you some context on the largest driver of, of rate increases, in particular, um, this one. This for two thousand and fourteen. And these are the costs mentioned that the transmission facility owners pass on to the, uh, electric system operator. Starting with the, the two lowest colored blocks there, those are the actual facility costs. The actual cost of the, the wires and towers and all of the transformers and the substations. Includes a return on the assets and continual upgrades and, and operating maintenance costs. On top of that, the little thin slice that is ISO own costs, that's purely the administrative cost the ISO encourages to, to manage the system. On top of that, operating reserves and other AS, that's other ancillary services. Those together are a block of costs that are primarily paid to generators and some large loads. That the electric system operator asks to operate or not operate at certain times and in certain regions to keep the system electrically stable. And, um, and, and avoid overvoltage and underfrequency and all of these events that can occur if the system isn't stable. And those charges are paid for, um, at that pool price we talked about. And some of them are, some of them are contracts for large customers, for instance, uh, who, who agree to drop big portions of their load at an instant should an issue arise in their region. There's a number of different services funded into those two rows, but they are the most volatile costs because they are tied to pool prices. And they are subject to things happening on the system, be it generators going down or wires failing, those sorts of things. That the ISO just has to jump in, take action to remediate and, and we won't pay for it. So that, those are the components in this chart, but really the, the visual effect that I wanted to communicate most strongly is this rather steep slope that we see in the, the whole thing going up. I put, imposed that vertical line there in two thousand and fourteen just to point out where we are and clearly we're just starting on the, the climb. This climb is part of a provincial policy change that really was set out in two thousand and five. To not only catch up on what was viewed as a deficit of infrastructure and transmission infrastructure in the province. But also to, in anticipation of substantial growth in the province. In Sydney's town, but also industrial requirements. And multiple generators popping up wherever they pop up. And like I mentioned, the, the, the mentality shift was from, well, uh, we're the utility, we know best. And we'd really like you to locate your generator over here. Well, why don't you wait a few years and, you know, then it'll be really convenient for us to build a line in there. To a mentality of, you want it, you want to put your generator there? Okay, we'll build a line to you. We'll get as much generation on to the system as we possibly can, no matter where or when. And then conversely, if you're a, a, a large industrial and you want to locate wherever you want to locate and there aren't sufficient transmission facilities in that region, then they will be built. They just will be built to make sure that you're on at the other end of the equation here, taking off as much energy and stimulating or providing as much economic growth stimulation in the province as possible. And all you wire guys in the middle, just keep building, get it on time, on budget, uh, as much as possible. So that was quite a mentality shift and it, that's what produced the government's direction to build, I believe it was five specific critical transmission infrastructure projects. to build, I believe it was five specific critical transmission infrastructure projects that are underway now and we're seeing them built. But that's a lot of infrastructure and that's what's driving this sharp slope on the chart and is what is driving transmission rate increases from the ISO through their tariff, through Fortis into your distribution tariff. Now, because you pay this Fortis tariff, I wanted to point out some of the, try to tie together some of the information that we've seen because Fortis is in the process of having their 2014 tariff approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission. And their literature, because it fits their application, showed increases that are different than what you, than what I expect you to experience, let's put it that way. And it's really just a matter of how they present their information. And what it gets down to is because the transmission costs have been quite volatile, they were set up and the commission came out with a process to standardize the way that transmission costs are handled, with the view that these are external charges to a distributor, that the distributor has no control over, and they are volatile. So with those criteria, those are the types of costs that the commission allows a deferral account to be created for, so that fluctuations can be smoothed out and shortages captured in later periods. And that's exactly how all of the main distributors that are utility commission regulated operate. They all have deferral accounts and they change those rider to recover whatever balances are outstanding on those deferral accounts. Those change every quarter. Now, so when Fortis comes in with an application for January 1st, 2014, they have a deferral account in place and that deferral account is basically being adjusted to zero by the end of 2013. So their first quarter, they don't have a large outstanding balance to be recovered. So their rider is forecast by them to go to zero, which makes sense. Yet, as of one hour after midnight on December 31st, because of those charges that are set by pool price, they will begin accumulating variances in their transmission deferral account. And by the second quarter, we'll have some sort of a balance to be recovered and we'll implement a rider to reflect that balance. And so, as a result of the way that these deferral accounts work, when you make a comparison of rates that include all of the riders on January 1st versus last quarter of 2013 and that transmission rider goes from a very high level to zero, you get a large decrease in your bill comparison. And that's why I wanted to reconcile where it would show that decrease of 34.6%, roughly, I calculated it for the town, with no transmission quarterly rider, that's what happens. And there's also an annual component to that that is also decreased. So they're quite accurately showing that that is the change, but you set your rates for the whole year. And so I have to go back and try and introduce a transmission rider that hopefully is representative of the year's rates for the town. And that's what I've done in this calculation, to account for the rider fluctuation. If you take the rider out of the equation, then the first two bullets there that says base distribution charges, Fortis has an 8% increase and base transmission charges, they are having a 28% increase. So that's why I say, if you just look at the base charges without the riders, you see what they are facing. They're facing the same transmission charge as everybody else in the province is, but it just happens that they got caught by a rate freeze that the province implemented in 2012, 13, that held their rider at a very high level for a period. So they over-collected and that's brought the annual rider down from then on and also when I explained about how it goes to zero on the quarterly month. So what I did is I went back and introduced a, well, I went back and I calculated, given your consumption levels as a customer of Fortis, what happens to your transmission charges from 2013 indicated actual what we have now versus what's forecast under the new Fortis rates? And that's where I get those percentage changes at the bottom there, with transmission going 50 and a half percent up and distribution charges possibly 12% increase. And those are the guideposts that I had used to create the rates for 2014. Now, your rates have a base transmission charge similar to what you receive from Fortis and a rider amount as well. And we've only used it on an annual basis to date, but it was separated as a rider so that as we track transmission charges throughout the year, just that rider can be tweaked to recover any balance should your balance ever get too far out of whack. We haven't experienced that yet, but I wouldn't rule it out because those charges coming from the ISO, they're based on pool price, they can, they can quadruple easily. We've seen monthly charges ranging from a couple of thousand dollars to 30,000 dollars for the town for that transmission rider. So it's a pretty volatile component, it's just that in the past, where we set the rider just happened to end up pretty close at the end. So hopefully that's where we're going, but if we had to tweak that rider, it wouldn't be a difficult thing to come back and say, well, let's tweak the rider to get to the year end where we want to be. When we do get together for our annual party, our eight seventy party, Noel and Mary and I, of course, I'm working from your budgets for capital and operating expenses for the upcoming year. Doing this later in the year, we know basically what Fortis charges have been for the majority of the current year. And we're also looking at generating a return to the town that's reflective of, you know, what it has been historically and levels that'll fund your capital requirements that you need to maintain your system. And then sort of the last step is we always go and look at the regional rates for comparative purposes. All the utilities in the AMX group do that, just to make sure they're not getting too far out of range. And that is how we come to the proposed rates and proposed rate changes by your individual rate classes here, residential, small commercial, medium commercial. And, yes, Jim?
Those figures that are on there, are they only the distribution portion of the bill?
No, that's...
Or would that be a total bill?
That's the wire component of your bill. So your distribution tariff has a transmission charge and a distribution charge.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
But it's not the energy.
Yeah, that's just the transmission distribution portion of the bill.
Yes.
Not the total bill.
That's right. Okay. So when we took those rates and compared them, that far, to the others in the region, including Fortis bills adjusted, as I mentioned, for that forecast quarterly rider, we have Carson, First Row, Fort McLeod, Crow's Nest, Pinoka, the other AMX members, and Lethbridge into the mix so we can see. Now, there's always, you know, people are on different schedules as well in terms of their rate increases. Crow's Nest stands out in this chart because they are still operating under rates that were set in September 2012. That is likely to be rectified in the new year. We don't have a schedule yet, but pretty confident that'll happen.
So when that happens, is it going to come up to recognizable, as same as Carson and Fort McLeod there? That's quite a sizable increase.
That would be my recommendation. But there again, their council may see different. You know, that slope we see on that transmission curve, just, you just cannot get too far behind that slope, you have to keep up with that. So I would strongly be encouraging them to stay with that, catch up to that slope and then stay with it. For the most part, distribution costs, be they NMAX or Fortis or yourselves, are relatively stable. Those systems, Fortis is growing probably more than other areas, but they're relatively stable, just churning the assets over. It's really the driver is just going to be transmission for the next decade or more.
What is the local access fee? What is that?
The local access fee is a fee that is added to the electric rates by the municipality to recognize that the electric utility within that municipality has located its facilities on municipal rights of way.
Okay.
And collects a fee for that.
Sorry, I think it's like a franchise agreement with outside utilities.
They pay the town? That's what it is?
We pay ourselves.
Right.
Because it's all...
And those vary widely. I haven't looked at Lethbridge lately, but last time I did, I think it was about 25% on wire charges was how they calculated it. You're at 5% on that same basis, so there's quite a range. Crow's Nest is at 16% now and they're, I could throw an asterisk in there, but they're, because they have Fortis operating in their service area.
So Carson and Pinoka is very, very close to each other. Are we the same size in size?
No, Pinoka's about three times the size.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Do you need to be resident there?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it would be nice to get some growth, some energy consumption growth in the towns, right? And that's, as economic, that's what I'm saying, I'll follow.
Yeah, the economy of scale, if I might, per Pinoka, you know, they're able to, obviously, with a larger customer base where we are limited and don't see much growth on an annual
Is it appropriate to ask the question, well, I'm gonna ask it anyway, the Fortis fees that they're charging us, is part of that component to help them to pay for transmission to other areas or is that just within our province?
Oh, we are, we build the...
Oh, just the province, absolutely.
There's been a lot of concern out there that somebody's trying to build lines to feed the states some energy and are we, as individual people, paying for that, which...
I want to know that from you, if we're having to pay for that, because if we are, I'm not happy with that.
Well, as I mentioned, there were certain projects that were deemed critical by the province, so that they didn't go through the Alberta Utility Commission test for need. And two of those are direct current lines from basically Edmonton through southern Alberta. One of those, the west Alberta one, is in construction now, $1.7 billion.
Who's paying for it?
And the costs of that are going into that transmission tariff.
What can we do about it?
Nothing.
Well, there were a lot of arguments put forward and the town in particular put forward arguments questioning the need for those lines and whether or not they were being built to the benefit of Alberta rate payers or not. There was a separate inquiry into it, committee struck to review the determinations made by the ISO in terms of the requirement for those facilities. That committee came back and concluded that they were in fact required to serve the forecast low growth in the province and they will be built. So, you know, the world changes as we go and I, my view of this is that at one time, with the oil sands development, the outlook was that with steam injection technology, there would be a massive requirement for steam from which, through cogeneration of electricity, there would be a massive production of electricity in that northeastern corner of the province that had to go somewhere because there's no load up there other than the oil sands themselves. And at that time, I believe it was conceived that we need to bolster our backbone system so that in the event we need to, or have the ability to export power, that we would have an avenue to do that. And, you know, times change. Now, the technology around steam injection for oil sands development is changing to radiant heating that no longer requires steam. So whether we will ever get to the point where we are going to use those lines for exporting surplus power, I don't know. I can't say one way or the other. But the argument is that no matter what, we will, either we will use that for surplus power or we will attract generation in the province that can be built in that competitive environment and they, because they have an opportunity now to export using lines, the facilities will be there. So the economic spinoff will result from having a generator building in the province and operating and buying resources like gas to fuel their production and they will all be good.
Was there ever, in the conversation, was there ever part of if they do export, that there would be a payback to us, that we could reduce our rates because we're selling to somebody else out of the country and that they would be paying a surcharge so that we would be paid back and reduce our rates? Was that ever part of the equation? Because to me, it makes common sense.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that was brought up. It's never, I've never seen any formal discussion of that circularity of revenues. I think it's viewed more as that's part of the incentive for a generator to locate here and produce and receive the benefits of that. And the other spin on that is we have the pool, the power pool is a, like I said, it's, the price is set based on the price... the price is set based on the price of the offerings into it from generators. If you have generators locating in Alberta because they have an open avenue to an export market and they're producing surplus power, they will also be selling into that power pool that will theoretically reduce the cost of energy to those retailers buying it out of the pool and selling it to you.
Another question I have, since we've been hearing that they're trying to eliminate coal generation, and we got talk about, you know, gas and the problems with the carb, hydrocarbon emissions and stuff, what are they talking about as an alternative to this type of generation? I mean, if we can't use coal, which we've got tons of in abundance, and gas, which we have in abundance, where are they planning on getting energy to produce the energy?
You're right, the coal-fired plants in the province may self-eliminate themselves and probably through gas conversion. I just read the other day that IMAX and Epcor are adding two large generating units to totaling 1,000 megawatts out, or near the Geneseed Coal Plant that is there already. And the idea there is partly to take advantage of the transmission infrastructure in that region. So I, it's probably not going to be wind. Solar is limited, as I understand it, in the province due to our winter sunlight profile. Storage, I think, is one of the main technologies that's talked about that could elevate the value of renewables like wind and solar. But I think the general view is that it's going, it's got to be gas for at least the next 20 to 25 years before the globe comes to grips with its emission issues, so.
Kevin, with our upgrade in our system, our transmission system to 25 KV, would it be practical that in the future, that we look at wind turbines for our own area and then selling it into the grid?
It's technologically a start, for sure. The legislation does limit, however, the amount of generation that a municipality can own and operate to a level that serves its own load, basically, but...
And when he says own load, our municipal buildings, our municipal infrastructure, not the residents of the town, when our own, the town of Curst.
So we could shove three turbines up on the hill and generate our own power and then sell whatever off?
The process that municipalities go through, if they want to do that, is that they need to get onto a level playing field, as it's been called. So you would be, you would create something called a payment new of taxes to recognize that other entities that are privately owned would pay a certain amount of income tax. So you would add that into your cost structure and property tax, and just those sorts of features that eliminate the advantage a municipality would have if it were to compete in that competitive market. Now, if you can overcome those hurdles, which haven't been overcome, then you can go beyond your municipality.
How does Mr. Hat handle that?
You've heard the old saying, just say no? They stood up and strongly said no back in 1993 when the province started talking about this, of restructuring the industry in its totality, and said, well, we own our own resources, we have our own facilities, you know, knock yourselves out, just leave us out.
Kevin, how much time do you still need to finish your presentation? Just to have an idea, the staff has prepared a supper, so, and we are just about a half an hour behind time.
We're fine, no, it's fine.
Are we fine? Thank you. So how much time do you have?
It's not overcooked?
I, I'm open for more questions if we have them, but other than that, I don't have any.
You're done with your presentation, thank you. So councillor, please, go ahead.
Just want to refer back to that, the graph that you had of the rate, the slope rates. When you were talking about the reason for that, part of the projection was growth in the province. And I want to do a comparison. Earlier in our session, we talked about, you know, taxes, and we say that we will get more taxes because there's more growth. We have new house, so we don't have to raise everybody's rates. So what I'm asking is, did you or has anybody considered that, you know, that part of the cost will come from, or part of the money will come from new growth and not have to raise everybody's rates? Is that, I just wonder if that was taken into consideration.
Yeah, this is considering growth. These are, these, by the title there, so this is the unit cost, dollars per megawatt hour in the province, and so this anticipates the growth.
So even with more people paying into it, it will still, it's still...
Yes, this is with reasonably steady growth in the industrial sector in particular. So what's it look like without that growth? I don't want to show you.
All right.
Yeah.
Be grateful for that.
The ISO went through a very rigorous process to develop this chart that I removed from their current tariff application out to 2031.
Are there any more questions from councillor? Councillor, please go on.
So I'm just curious, if like Medicine Hat, we were able to generate some electricity locally, would we be able to cut out, as it were, these middlemen costs? Or are they just regulated in no matter what?
You would be able to apply the, whatever benefits you're able to receive from the electricity you generate, say you cover, say you put up a wind turbine and it covered off all of your municipal facilities through a contract, so you contract with yourself. So instead of paying whatever rates you're contracting with now, you're selling it to yourself, and it's, instead of eight cents a kilowatt hour, it's five. So you'd get that benefit. And then if you had at times some surplus, you could sell it into the pool and earn some money that way.
But you have to find a way to connect.
Yeah, your generator is still connected to the transmission system, if it didn't connect to the distribution. You would still have your town connected to the distribution system. Your generator's running, so you're probably, you're feeding back into your system and reducing the take through the Forest meter. You would get some gains that way. But basically, it's still part of the system. It's just you moved a piece of your infrastructure up to the top of the chart, and you're feeding down. So that actually may not even affect, you would still have to buy that energy through the pool, through the transmission, through Forest to yourself, so you actually would reduce Forest.
There's a risk to that, if I might, because you have to sell into the pool and buy back. So depending on your selling rate, hourly rate, you could actually end up losing a lot of your generation for this, for the access portion.
Yeah.
All right. Since we're in a public hearing, if council doesn't have any more questions for Kevin, but we have two people, Mr. Conrad and Mr. Olson in the gallery, are you prepared to make a presentation to council? No?
Already questioned.
Already questioned.
Essentially, it's a presentation to council? No? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin. And so we need a motion to reconvene?
I have one final question.
All right.
Earlier, Kevin, going back to a statement that you made about where will the power come from, the first thing out of your mouth was, it's not going to be wind. Why did you say that?
Well, wind is only so reliable. If you can get 35% capacity out of it, you're doing okay.
And you can't still...
So to serve loads that are on constantly, it just can't, you probably can't build enough wind to displace 100% coal or 100% capacity gas.
Well, that's Pincher Creekdom with theirs. Is that what they're finding? There's loads just aren't enough there, or what?
Part of these expenditures, the big green on the bottom there, those are not the large projects that I was talking about, but those are regional projects. And the Southern Alberta Transmission Reinforcement Project was a huge project that has facilitated a lot of wind development. And it's, you know, they've built it and it's coming. There are quite a number of, I think it's about 17, will be 1,700 megawatts of wind within the next few years, so that's quite a significant part of the presentation.
Where's that, where's that generation system coming? The Black, is it Black Ridge or something like that?
Yeah, that's one of them, yeah.
Just maybe for clarification as well, the Pincher Creek projects, those are, that's private industry, right? That's developing that. So it's not, it's not affecting the MD of Pincher Creek or the town of Pincher Creek. It's just that's where the wind is, and that's where they're able to connect to the transmission. So it's private investment.
All right. So we need a motion to reconvene?
I'm, it's a motion to reconvene.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, we need to have second reading and third reading approved.
Second motion for second reading.
Thank you, councillor Berry. Second reading, we have a motion. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. I now need a third reading approved. Councillor Edmonds is approving third reading. We need to have...
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Is there a specific deadline by which we need to have this passed, like today? Or before the new year, essentially?
Well, we gave that time from first reading to second and third reading in order for the public to come forward, and whoever would be interested to be here today was published in a paper on our website many different ways. So normally what we need to do is to approve it because we approved the budget, and the budget has those rates. It has an impact on the budget.
The other component to that is we have to give notification to the IMAX Energy bills on our behalf to run, and we have to give them a 45 days' notice. So we've not had a second council meeting in December. It does put us sort of in a position, if we want them to be effective February 1st, we would have to pass it.
And councillor P. Roy, I appreciate your concern, but truly, we can't do anything about those rates.
I mean, really, if I may, just to comment, we're basically just choosing to either pass this added expense to the taxpayer or pass it along to the ratepayer. So that's...
Yeah, we have to pay it one way or the other.
Yeah, exactly.
It has to be paid. You're right. Okay, so we have a third reading motion on the table. All in favor? I mean, honestly, it's not pleasant to you, it's not pleasant to me either.
Hope was very reluctant.
Yes. Okay, so at this point, is super ready? Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Barfus?
It's not too much.
To recess.
To recess, sorry, not to adjourn. We're a little too fast.
That was awesome.
All right, and we need to start to sit together for a few minutes to take a picture.
Do you want to do the picture first before we...